Chair Jose Uizar and Paul Coretts. We may be joined by another member or two momentarily. We have an exciting discussion today on street vending and how we make it legal, what that process is going to be, questions that have to be answered, and your role in it. From food truck vending to our infamous bacon-wrapped hot dogs, street vending has become an essential part of the culture in Los Angeles. That's why last year Councilman Uizar and I introduced a motion to legalize and regulate street vending in Los Angeles. I firmly believe that creating a system for street vending will help micro entrepreneurs thrive, it will also help bring more diverse foods to communities like the one I represent that have lacked options for decades, and it's going to allow people who are part of this underground economy to come out of the shadows, for us to generate some income and some revenue. But I want to be clear on what's before us today. What we're going to be discussing today is a framework for a citywide street vending policy, not the final policy. The details remain to be hashed out, where vending is going to be permitted, how much it's going to cost for a license, what the enforcement regime is going to be. All of these things are going to be still to be decided. You will have input into that process. And we want to encourage that, a full discussion from all parties as we move forward on this policy. But with that said, let's move on to public comment. We're going to ask your comments to be limited to one minute. We will then have a formal presentation by the CLA and comments from the committee. So without further ado, why don't we take our comments? If you can just sort of line up in order so we can try to move forward swiftly in an expeditious manner. I've got Don Cadenza, Cash Ardon, Meredith Hackelman, Maria Cabrillo.
Pardon me, Mr. Chair. Could we go ahead and read the item into the record?
Yes.
Okay. Item number one is a chief legislative analyst reports relative to recommendations on the regulation of food street vending and regulation of merchandise and non-food street vending in the city of Los Angeles. This item is also referred to the Public Works and Gang Reduction Committee.
All right, thank you. We've been joined by Councilman Sadio as well. Let me try another group of names here. Cardio Vesquez, Rudy Espinoza, Aloflo Garcia, Claire Fox.
My name is Maria Cavildo and I'm the president of East LA Community Corporation. We've been working on this for a long time. The vendors here have been waiting for this for a very long time. We've met with a number of council members. We've been asked to do research, we've done that research, and we brought it back to you. You're going to hear some of that today, including over $400 million worth of economic impact that street vendors have on the city of Los Angeles on an annual basis. One of the things in the report that I want to call out is that there's a discussion of designated areas for vending. What we learned from the MacArthur Park Pilot Street Vending Project is that it's important that vending be citywide for it to be effective because we need all of the vendors to participate in the legal vending system so that there aren't any free riders. So we really need to look at a policy that is citywide, not just particularly designated areas for this policy to be effective. Also, a framework is nice, but what we need is a policy now.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Rudy Espinoza. I'm the executive director of a nonprofit called Learn, which is based in Boyle Heights. Thank you so much for hearing this issue. It's an issue that we've been working on for years. Just this morning on the way to the office, I saw an older woman selling food on the corner in the rain. And that is exactly the type of entrepreneur that we need in Los Angeles, people that are trying to take care of their families. And the city should embrace folks like that, and we need more entrepreneurs like that in our neighborhoods. So I want to encourage you to support and accelerate this process. We've been working on it for a long time, and we believe in your power to do something good for those types of entrepreneurs. Over $400 million in revenue to the city, so thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, council members. I'm Claire Fox. I'm the Director of Policy and Innovation for the L.A. Food Policy Council. I've been here before you many times before, speaking to the urgency of addressing disparities in access to nutritious food and the very real health implications that this has for many communities of color, many low-income communities here in L.A. Street vendors are on the front lines of bringing healthy foods into these communities. They're already there remedying this disparity, and for that reason, the network of over 200 organizations that are part of the L.A. Food Policy Council effort have galvanized to support L.A. street vendors. And I'd also like to speak to the larger aspect of this policy. The men and women here today, the street vendors who are here advocating, have done something incredible. They've created for themselves a livelihood in an economy that did not offer them a job, so they truly are entrepreneurs in the greatest sense of the word. And any concerns or opposition that are raised here today will not be resolved by sticking our heads in the ground and doing nothing. They will only be addressed by a sensible and fair policy. So thank you for your leadership on this issue.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Meredith Hackelman. I work for the Metabolic Studio as a grower, and I also work with the L.A. Food Policy Council on food activism and food access. And I just wanted to lend my support to developing a policy. I think it's one of the great ways for us to develop urban ag and the access to healthy fresh food. And with these small street vendors, they can develop businesses and work with the new cottage food law to create new opportunities for all the young people coming into the world, and I think it's very important. So thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Carlos Ardone. I'm the executive director of the Public Immigrant Policies Institute of Los Angeles. I'm glad that you are taking the right steps this time to fix the situation of the sidewalk vending. But I would like to emphasize that there has to be a citywide program because in the report, they mention that it's over 10,000 vendors. And if you want to put them on the sidewalks and on the parks, I don't know if there's going to be enough place for those who would like to sell, to get a place where they can sell. The other is, I don't see the mention of the open-air markets in case somebody doesn't qualify for vending on the streets. They can apply for, also to, on the open-air markets. There's something that we really need in order to fix this problem. I have been working with the street vendors since, with Councilmember Michael Hernandez, who's here, and we did the pilot project on MacArthur Park. So we know what the problems are, we know how to fix these problems, and I really like to see, I really like to thank you for your leadership, and we hope that this is something that we can do in order to fix this problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Don Garza. I'm a resident of downtown Los Angeles. I'm fifth in Main. I've been downtown 15 years. I've seen a major loss in my taco vendors, my tamale vendors, but I'm for this. I'm for, we need an ordinance, we need to start regulating vending. But my biggest concern is, we have a bigger issue in downtown on that street, on Main Street, which is, there is a possibility that some people that want to commit crime may decide to get in front of some of the businesses that are trying to conduct business and use them as a front for drugs and everything like that. So we need to make sure that we work with the local downtown L.A. community and with everybody so that way people can make money and feed their families. But let's make sure that my part of the street on Main Street, as we've cleaned it up from drug dealers, they don't begin again, once again, to start using, find a way to use this as a way to be a front for dealing in front of legitimate businesses. Thank you, Jose, for your consideration in all of this.
Thank you. Another group of speakers, Barry Johnson, Carol Schatz, John Howland, Hal Bastian, Carmen Toledo.
Barry Johnson, Studio City stakeholder. As with many issues, one size does not fit all. I'm all for street vending in communities that want it. However, my community, Studio City, our neighborhood council, has opposed it in a community impact statement. Personally, I'm all for street vending, but in our case, we don't have any, and no disrespect intended. It's not part of our culture in our community. I respect it in the communities that it is part of the culture. But I would also draw your attention to Table 1 of today's handout from the Legislative Assistant stating that in CD2, if you look on Table 1, it's 000 all across the chart. And that's because we don't have street vending, for the most part, in CD2. And I strongly urge you to let each neighborhood council decide its own future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Schatz, President of the Downtown Center Business Improvement District in the CCA. The vendors may have been at this for a long time, but the motion was introduced not that long ago, and the process has been severely lacking. There have been two meetings for us with the CLA, not with the city family. We expected, and you directed the last time you met in May, that you would come back in this report with enforcement measures, operational budget, revenue projections, vendor fees, and options. And they are not a part of this report. And we are concerned about waiting for this to come up later. The framework basically says you are going to proceed with a vending program without knowing how much it will cost, who is going to enforce it and how much. And trust me, LAPD is going to have to hire a lot of people to do this. So please, put the cart before the horse, get these questions answered, and then go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm John Howland, also with CCA. Any program to legalize street vending in the city will have a significant impact on every neighborhood and every business in this city. The committee needs to hold meetings throughout the city, in South L.A., in various parts of the valley, in San Pedro, the West Side, and especially in downtown at a time when the mom-and-pop vendors who are currently in restaurants, who are currently serving the lunchtime crowd, have a chance to come out and talk about the impacts and the effects this will have on them. CCA has been saying that a one-size-fits-all model doesn't work in the city and that each neighborhood should have the ability to weigh in, like the gentleman from Studio City. Please go on a listening tour, find out what the constituents want. Don't have city staff sequestered somewhere upstairs in city hall deciding the plans and what's going to work and what's not. Go out and listen to what the people of the city say. Some will support this, some may not. Hear what they have to say. Meet the constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Hal Bastian, Hal Bastian, Inc. I'm a city builder and I've been involved with the downtown renaissance for the last 20 years. I'd like to speak against this proposal. This city does not have the capacity to enforce much of anything. Just go over to Skid Row and watch people shooting up in the public realm, and I'm told that we don't have the capability or facility to deal with that situation, and we don't deal with narcotics and people killing themselves in the public realm. So what makes us think that we can control street vending in this city? If street vending starts in front of my building, and I'm the president of my HOA down here at Spring and Third, and street vending starts in front of my home, there's going to be a diminution of my real estate value? If Mr. Broad will allow in front of his home here in the city of Los Angeles, we can talk about it, but I don't think that's going to happen. And I don't think this is something that we should be considering as a way to create economic opportunity to people that don't have it. It's not the way to go. And we're not going to collect taxes, and it's unfair to my constituents. I represent area-wide business that pay taxes and brick-and-mortar businesses. It's just not fair, and we shouldn't do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carmen Rodriguez Teledo, and I'm a resident of downtown Los Angeles. I've been here over 10 years, and I'm an advocate for this part of town, advocate for Los Angeles in the hospitality industry especially, in bringing tourism to this wonderful city. I am at the moment opposing this proposal simply because I feel we're not prepared in the background, first of all, to educate these vendors who would like to have and establish their business, to have resources for them, whether it's equipment. At the moment, they are on the streets, they do have propane gas. I see them every day cutting fruit in the strollers. I see them every day washing their hands, they go into the public restrooms, and things are not sanitary. So my concern is for health reasons, for myself, for our citizens, and especially for tourists, who, when they come here to our beautiful city, they rely that when they're purchasing food anywhere, that we are actually watching out for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Wingo, Defari Bane, Doug Smith, Lilana Montanez.
Thank you so much for having us here today. My name is Jerry Wingo. I'm a vendor in Lemur Park in the middle of Los Angeles. And I'm here today because I'm asking you to vote for the legalization of street vending. You know, the city doesn't have jobs for us, and business schools have taught for years that the wave of the future was create your own jobs, and that's what we're doing here. We're using the skills that we have to create things that people like to buy, and it's a way for us to make a living because, though we don't have jobs, we want a part of the American dream too. We want a place to live, we want a car, you know? And we're here in Lemur Park, and I just have to mention my friend Debbie back here, who's a bit shy. She's out there feeding the homeless, feeding veterans. The money recycles through the park. The homeless people come and help us get our items out of the car and help us set up, and we pay them. So the money is going around the park and being shared amongst others. It's a lot of love out there, and I want you to know that. It's an opportunity for you to do an ordinance that works for people who are willing to work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please hold your applause.
Afternoon, Mr. Price. My name is Defari Bane. I'm a commissioner with City of Los Angeles on Transportation. I'm a consultant with Sicla Via, and I also work with the California Endowment. My experience with all those partners has taught me that street vending is a very valuable way to both bring viable services to communities, help bring life to L.A.'s vast streets and underutilized spaces, and make sure to provide opportunities for Los Angeles to be self-employed. It's important that Los Angeles gets up to speed with other metro areas who have already started to look at regulating and ensuring legalization for these aspects of business. It's a common practice, and this is a good way to get at some of the issues that the other, the, you know, opposing advocates are getting at in terms of health, safety, and concerns. Legalizing this process is a way to help make that happen. So we can't hide from this issue. It exists, it always exists in Los Angeles, it's going to continue to exist even if we pretend like it doesn't. And so why not just make this work, make this work for everybody? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Doug Smith, and I'm an attorney at Public Counsel. We strongly support the creation of a citywide street vending permit program. This is a chance to open doors to entrepreneurship that are currently closed, to expand our economic recovery into neighborhoods that are currently excluded, and to re-energize the commercial and cultural vibrancy of our streets. The proposed framework is a strong start, and it provides the structure and roadmap needed to start drafting an ordinance. But moving forward, the details are crucial, so we ask for your leadership today. We urge you to approve this framework, but also give direction to start drafting those policy details that will give shape to a truly successful program. This calls for establishing an easy-to-navigate permit application process without undue barriers to participation, promoting compliance through education and support, not criminalization, creating meaningful incentives for healthy food vending, and embracing the benefits of vending citywide without an artificial cap on the number of permits. Broadening access to opportunity is the great potential of this program. Let's seize this opportunity.
Did you say Emily Martinez? I heard Evelyn. Is it Emily?
No, Lilana?
Milan. So that's not me. So I'll wait for you to call.
Well, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, thank you. My name is Emily Martinez. I'm a business owner on Olvera Street, and we've had problems there with street vending. I do believe that any reports that are, that have to be made, that are not incorporated in what you may vote for today, should be incorporated before you pass any kind of ordinance. And I firmly believe that you need to have designated areas because not everyone, they should not be taking business from businesses that are already there. In the past ordinance that was passed, the tenants or the merchants were able to have input as to whether they would allow street vending. And if they're going to be allowed to go citywide at the expense of businesses that are paying rents, much more expenses, then that's not fair. You're taking money of the businesses that are already established. And any meetings that you have, you should allow, you should send notices out to the businesses and tenants that are affected, such as downtown, Olvera Street. Many of us didn't know about these meetings, and that's, I hope you go follow with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hola, buenos dias. Mi nombre es Liliana Martinez, y yo soy una vendedora ambulante en Boyle Heights. Y el problema es el siguiente para mí. Yo he vendido por cinco años en la calle hasta que llegó la policía y me quitó todo, todo lo que tenía.
Hello, my name is Liliana Martinez, and I am a vendor in Boyle Heights. The issue that I have is that I've ended, I was vending for five years, and then the police came and took everything I had.
Yo vendo comida, no vendo droga, no vendo alcohol, no vendo cigarros, y creo que es justo porque es el sustento de mi familia con el cual yo puedo pagar mi renta, mi comida, mis bilers para poder sobrevivir aquí en California.
I sell food, I don't sell drugs, I don't sell alcohol, and I think it's important because this is the money that I use to pay my rent and to sustain my family.
Yo empecé a vender comida porque cuando vino la recesión, mi esposo perdió su trabajo y no teníamos otra forma de sostenernos.
I started selling food on the streets because when the recession came, my husband lost his job, and we didn't have another way to sustain our family.
Y nada más le quiero decir al señor Wilson que él ha comido mi comida, al señor Wilson, al concejal Wilson, él ha comido mi comida, y yo creo que no soy enfermado porque hago las cosas bien limpias. Él ha comido mis albóndigas, el señor Uizar ha comido mis flautas, entonces creo que ellos saben el sabor que le ponemos a la comida.
And I just want to tell Councilman Weston that I know he's eaten my food, and he hasn't gotten sick, and he knows the flavor that goes into my food, and Uizar has eaten my flautas.
Entonces creo que es justo. Yo remember that. Okay, y también Uizar, que ha comido las flautas de pollo. So creo que es justo que pasen leyes porque de ahí sustenemos a nuestras familias y damos economía aquí a Los Ángeles. Gracias.
I think it's fair for you to legalize vending because that's how we sustain our families and we contribute to the economy of Los Angeles. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Peter Stanislaus, Kevin Sharkey, Norma Abou, Carlos Sandoval.
Good afternoon, Kevin Sharkey, resident of South Park. I'm opposed to this for the very reason that I don't feel like the city has thought this out well. The city doesn't have the resources now to pave the streets, hire more police officers who you're going to count on probably to police this situation. Have you coordinated this with the County Department of Health that regulates food? I think there's a lot of unanswered questions, and this is not well thought out, and my concern is this seems like this is a done deal already. And I'm asking you to please stop and listen to people that are opposed to this, and at least let's all try to come together and work out a solution to this that will keep the neighbors happy and also create opportunity for people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Peter Stanislaus. I'm representing Two and Three Ventures and Historic Downtown Businesses and Merchants Association. We're opposed to this, given, one, it makes it hard to be a responsible operator if there's street vendors crowding the entrance of our establishments. It becomes very hard to control the environment. Also, crowds sitting out front make, disrupt people who live upstairs, which thusly gets passed on as our responsibility as we try to keep the streets clear. Also, I fear that it will discourage people investing their business in brick-and-mortars downtown. We're just getting to the point where we have momentum, and people are strongly looking at downtown as an epicenter of food, and I fear that with street vendors, it's going to be very difficult for them to justify it, given the overhead of ADA, rent, and all the other things they spend money on to become legitimate. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Norma Abou. I am a small business owner in the downtown area. I've had restaurants for the last 10 years. We are surrounded by illegal food vendors that claim that they have every right to be there, but they pay no rent, no insurance, they don't get regulated by the health department the way we are regulated. They can sell their hot dogs for $2.45, $3.45. We can't afford to do that because we have rent, we have gas, electricity, employees to worry about. You passing this law really puts our business into a high risk. We are not asking you for anything other than to really consider this before you go ahead with it. You will be putting a lot of businesses, that are already established, that have already sacrificed, in danger of going bankrupt, having to close. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My respects. My name is Carlos Sandoval. I've been in the alleys for 20 years. I have a spot in Olvera Street, and a store in Hill Street and Seven. And I'm against this because I started in the swat mix. I pay EDD, I pay the border of equalization, and federal taxes. If you do this, it's going to be 17 to 23 more people in the streets selling. So I believe there is no way to control this, and it's against the police and everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Andres Ramirez, Cecilia Mendez, Antonio Bernabe, and Santa Hilda.
Can you repeat the names? Because they were...
What is your name?
My name is Antonio Bernabe, but the other people is asking me about the other names.
Okay, well, Antonio, why don't you begin?
Okay. My name is Antonio Bernabe. I'm an organizer for CHIRLA. I do organize street vendors, and I believe they are ready to go, to have better businesses, to invest in their own businesses once they have a permit. They are waiting for it. Right now, they have to be running from the police every day. That's why they are not investing and have a better business or a better car. And now, I believe they are ready. That's why we are here. They pay taxes, and they already exist. It's not new, it's not like passing this ordinance. We are going to have street vendors. They are ready, they are selling. So that's why we had to legalize street vending and work in better the vending and better the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Andres Ramirez, Cecilia Mendez, Santa Hilda, and Mercedes Sanchez.
My name is Andres Amírez. I'm here in behalf of, oh, well, I'm here in behalf of community health councils, and I'm here in support of the policy for legalizing street vending. My mother was a street vendor for over 30 years. That's where we had our livelihood growing up. And I remember feeling like, not understanding why street vendors are criminalized when they're just trying to make a livelihood. I remember seeing street vendors getting their goods thrown in the trash by police and sheriffs. I... I believe there's a need for regulation. And I wholeheartedly believe you all will come up with a good resolution. But legalization is very much necessary and I support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Mercedes Sanchez. Soy miembro de la Asociación de Vendedores Ambulantes. Soy vendedora por más de 10 años.
Hi, everybody. My name is Santa Huerta. I'm a street vendor. I participate in the street vending campaign. And I've been a vendor for 10 años? Over 10 years.
Para mí es importante pedirles que nos apoyen con la legalización de nuestra venta porque para mí, en lo personal de esto depende el alimento de mis padres que se encuentran en México.
It's really important to me to legalize street vending. That's like how I sustain my family and that's how I support my parents in Mexico also.
Gracias a todos por escucharnos y esperamos que sí nos legalice nuestra venta ambulante. Sí se puede.
Thank you, everybody, for listening to us. I hope that we are able to legalize street vending. And thank you for listening. Sí se puede. Yes, we can.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Cecilia Mendez. Y yo vengo representando Pacoima. Soy vendedora ambulante.
Good afternoon, my name is Cecilia Mendez. And I'm here representing Pacoima. I am a street vendor.
Mi venta es de tamales y champurrado. Y he tenido la experiencia que me han quitado mis cosas. Y yo quisiera, por favor, que nos escucharan a legalizar la venta ambulante de vendedores.
I sell tamales and champurrado. And I've had the experience of getting my equipment confiscated. And I'm here to ask you to legalize street vending.
Les pido, por favor, que tomen en cuenta que estamos vendiendo cosas para nuestras familias.
I want to ask you to take into account that we are selling things for our families.
Y les pido a todos ustedes que nos escuchen, por favor.
And I want to ask all of you to listen to us, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember, can I ask you to put two minutes on the clock for those that need translation, just in case some folks need to go along?
Okay. Pardon me, Mr. Chief.
Good afternoon, my name is Leslie Mendez. And I was raised by a street vending mother. It wasn't easy. She was in the same for more than 20 years. And sometimes she would worry more about the police coming to find her or the health department showing up. At times, she was treated like a criminal. And we've been working on this for more than six years. And we've had very hard dedication towards it. And a lot of people have found street vending the only way to have a roof over their heads and food on the table. So I really hope you guys think about legalizing it. Thank you.
All right, Guy Shauly, Eduardo Campi, David Brown, Darla Sala, Carrie Morrison, and Nicole Sharon.
Good afternoon, my name is Guy Shauly. I'm a business owner and also a black captain, as you know, Neighborhood Watch for the Fashion District. My fellow business owners and I in the downtown L.A. Fashion District are proposed to allowing the legalization of sidewalk vending. Allowing sidewalk vending will result in the following: additional sidewalk congestion resulting in poor pedestrian traffic; reduction in patrons as a result of negative experience associated with crowded and unmanaged sidewalk; increasing crime: pickpocketing, petty theft, domestic violence, kidnapping, drug dealing, etc.; reduced parking availability for customers; increased street debris, which is already occurring due to sidewalk food vendors; increased pests, which is already occurring due to sidewalk food vendors; property damage; unwanted solicitations; increase in sales of stolen pirated goods, which are already being sold by sidewalk vendors. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Eduardo Campi. I'm a business owner. I own restaurants. I employ over 30 people. There's a number of issues related to enforcement and to health issues that people have mentioned and are not clear to me as to how they're going to be handled. But my concern is that if you allow this to pass and I have three street vendors in front of my restaurant with no overhead or very little overhead, I am going to be out of business in no time. And with me go the 30 people for whom you are trying to create jobs. So I don't think that this is going to work the way you are expecting it to work. So I would urge you to rethink this before you emit any kind of votes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Nicole Shanahanian with the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. I'm here specifically to ask that the city stay away from a one-size-fits-all policy for street vending in Los Angeles and that at minimum, the city allow for an opt-out clause for business improvement districts within the city where property owners already pay an additional assessment to keep their streets clean and safe. The Hollywood Chamber is disappointed that once again, a report to your committee has been released to the public with very little time for the business community to digest the report and make any sort of thoughtful and deliberative remarks to this body before you consider it. As you know, Hollywood Boulevard is the most famous street in the world and is home to some of L.A.'s most crowded sidewalks. With tens of thousands of visitors each day, Hollywood is a unique area with very specific public safety concerns surrounding the use of its sidewalks and protection of the Walk of Fame. The Boulevard is already struggling with an overabundance of seedy vendors, street characters, and tour bus solicitors and cannot afford the increase in the number of street vendors that legalization of sidewalks would undoubtedly bring. But not to mention the logistical nightmare that this will pose with the time that Hollywood Boulevard is closed, which is a quarter of the year, with our movie premieres and other big events that utilize the sidewalk. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is David Brown. I am the treasurer of an HOA on the corner of Maple and Eighth. For the last year, we've had a vending cart outside that does sausages with the bacon and stuff. From a personal point of view, I'm a vegetarian and have been for 40 years. I can open my window for the stink of these sausages coming in because it makes me physically sick. If we go out and ask them to move, they refuse to move. They put tables and chairs outside on the sidewalk at 8:00 a.m. They're there till 8:00 p.m., seven days a week, partying out there. We are stakeholders. Personally, I put $600,000 to buy a loft downtown. We're rejuvenating the area. You're encouraging us to rejuvenate the area. At the same time now, you're proposing to put all these food carts outside. We have retail spaces on the bottom. How are we going to be able to put coffee bars or any kind of food service down there when you allow these vendors outside who do not, as my friend said just now, do not have the overheads that these stores do? And it's just not right. And when you try and see these food carts, you try and move them, do you see the grease that's on the road? I mean, have you ever walked around the city and actually seen what this is doing to the city? I wish you would. Thank you very much.
Please, please, hold your comments.
Good afternoon, I'm Darla Sala, general manager of Hollywood and Highland. As a high-profile and bustling destination in the heart of Hollywood, we see on a daily basis the increasing level of activity on the Boulevard from a variety of sources, including people soliciting and aggressively vending, including costume street characters. The vendors and others intercept people trying to walk along the already very busy sidewalks, impede access to businesses, and are generally unwanted, disruptive, and hazardous to the safety of people trying to navigate Hollywood. Our retail and restaurant tenants on Hollywood Boulevard find customers bypassing them to go outside the center, to go inside the center, to avoid being harassed on the street. We also find this a hurdle in our leasing efforts as potential tenants are concerned about the environment on the Boulevard. Vendors also congregate at the entrances to our center and block emergency exit doors. Given the current situation... Is that my time?
You may finish your sentence.
Okay. Given the current situation, we need less activity on Hollywood sidewalks and not more. Having more vendors in Hollywood will exasperate an already difficult situation, harm the area's businesses, create a less inviting climate for locals and visitors, and potentially be a deterrent to economic growth and activity. Hollywood is in an area that is experiencing positive growth with new residences and businesses choosing to locate here.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Carrie Morrison, Patricia Berman, Kent Smith, Matt Shantoff. Carrie Morrison, Patricia Berman, Kent Smith, Mark Shantoff. You may begin.
I think there was supposed to be someone in front of me. My name is Patricia Berman. I am the president of the Downtown Los Angeles Neighborhood Council. Our board has taken a vote on this. And our position is pretty much that nothing should be done until the proper resources have been found and established to take care of the enforcement of this. There's so little resource available in the city right now. We're still coming back out. Recently, in Historic Core where I live, a business was forced out of business practically overnight by the Health Department for sharing a bathroom. When they were a retail space, they did not serve food on the premises at all. And there's so little available for the people who are doing the brick and mortar. We can't start with something new unless we have the resources in place. We absolutely have to have these resources. So find them, put them in place, and then put together a skeleton of how you want it to work. Because right now, there are so many people... All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Kent Smith. I'm the executive director of the L.A. Fashion District Bid. We comprise over 4,000 businesses, of which over 90% are family-owned. We are already overwhelmed by a large number of mobile vendors who locate in our district with virtual impunity at any legitimate parking spot. We already have over 100 mobile vendors on a weekend. And mobile vendors locate in the area's highest pedestrian traffic. In our highest pedestrian areas, we have up to 17 mobile vendors on a block. We have huge public safety issues already with mobile vendors who already are legal in the city of L.A. And we cannot, in the Fashion District, understand how you could add sidewalk vending as an overlay into what is already a congested area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shantoff, I am a prior board member of the Fashion District Bid, one of the founding members, owner of California Flower Mall in the Flower District. I am opposed to the outdoor vending ordinance for many reasons. I don't find the rationale of why you can allow the city sidewalk to be used for selling any product whatsoever. As an owner of a brick and mortar business and have multiple tenants that are family-owned, they work very hard to pay their rent. And this would devastate their possibility to thrive in this environment. The other issues are, it's very difficult. We're very busy during the holidays and it's very difficult. These outdoor vendors, they block our parking, our entrances to our business. And we're trying to promote the business to bring in customers and the businesses to thrive. So this needs to be thought out very clearly. And again, I am opposed to this whole concept for outdoor vending. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Labange, we'll grant you a chance to make some comments.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Tom Labange. I represent the 4th District. It's my 39th and 40th year with the city. And this is a very important issue, but I don't see the planning department here. Public Works should take care of the public right away. But the planning department should give us the vision. In 1934, the farmers of West Los Angeles took their goods, put them on their truck, and parked them, bumper-to-bumper on a vacant lot at Third and Fairfax. This, for over 80 years, the farmer's market has been operating on private land in a great economic place. Our challenge to colleagues is to create that around the city, whatever district it is, on private land. I think the public land, which includes the streets, should be cautious because of whatever the needs are, whether it's ADA, mobility, all the other things that come. If you don't control the streets and the sidewalks, even right now, when I was on Fifth Street this evening, or this afternoon, excuse me, several of the drains were already clogged and backed up from the debris that came through this recent storm. I would like to see us be creative. And also, Mr. Price, in my travels, I've also noticed in other cities where they allow... And I see Mr. James to the Public Works Board here, the front area to sell fruit. I got that if it's attached to a building, fine. And I challenge the planning department to look at the mini-malls, what everybody doesn't like, and create maybe one or two spaces in there to enhance it. We love open air, but I want the open air on the private land, not on the public land. And also, I'm here for public parks. And when you go to a public park, you don't expect to be anything but the public park. And I want it to be strengthened for the public parks so they can maintain the public parks. But I would like to work with anybody, and I have worked with some people here and gone out... I got half a smile, which is good, the no smile. They've gone out to look at some options for this. So it's something that I want to see elevated for public health, at public ways, at public good, and public parks. So I'm going to say thank you.
Thank you, councilman, for your comments. Hey, let's hear from Mike Hernandez, Julio Jornique, Leslie Mendez, Robert Egger, and Jose Moreno.
Mr. Chairman, councilmembers, I'm going through a little deja vu here. As the original author of the first street vending district in the city of Los Angeles, I went through a lot of the same discussion 15 years ago. And I want you to understand that it all started because I had a problem. And that problem was people who were trying to earn a living were being declared illegal. The reality is the activity was happening and we wanted to do something about it. So I want to commend you for the courage of wanting to do something about it because it's a difficult task. We know that in the city of Los Angeles, we have street vending at the zoo. When you go in and you buy a popsicle, there's a guy with a cart and he's selling you ice cream. You know you got street vending at malls. And you got puestos at Olvera Street. The reality is where you allow it versus where you don't allow it. And how do you regulate the activity? What you're hearing today is complaints about the activity that's going on today and the lack of our ability to do something about it. What you're hearing today is people who want to earn a living, not robbing banks, not stabbing people, but actually are part of neighborhoods who could serve a purpose in working hand-in-hand with the police and working hand-in-hand in those neighborhoods. What you're hearing today are people who want to earn a living and hopefully become businesses that are established in the city of Los Angeles and generate revenue for the city of Los Angeles. What I want you to understand is when we created that first district and we legalized vending, we had a problem with the food producers. And it's because of the Health Department. And all of a sudden, we created Mama's Tamales and became a central commissary where the Health Department could basically inspect the food. And people knew when they were buying tamales at MacArthur Park, they were good tamales. And it was part of the Health Department, but we created a whole new business in a restaurant. We also had the Episcopal Church who participated in helping vendors buy the same kinds of puestos, the same kind of carts, so they could sell their other goods. And we did have cooperation from those vendors in dealing with the issues that that neighborhood were affecting. And it made tremendous difference. So you have two choices. You can continue to have the courage to want to do something about it. And by doing that, regulating an activity that today we call illegal, but is happening anyway throughout the city. And trying to do it in a way that promotes a positive atmosphere in Los Angeles that allows people choices. And I just want you to understand it's going to be a tough road because when the bureaucracy of the city becomes part of it, you're talking to folks who have a 28% cap. That's the first problem they have. There's an administration cap they got to cover. And there's no staffing. There's an administration cap they got to cover, and there's no staffing. And your reality is, we want to simplify things. We want to figure out how to regulate it so that the police have a tool. I remember having a discussion with a city attorney who basically said, you know, councilman, every time I go to court with these street vending issues, the judges laugh at me. And the reason they laugh at me is because the city provides no alternative for these vendors. But those judges are basically dealing with all the other issues in Pico Union, and they don't understand why the city's harassing vendors. Now, you need to understand that that exists today. And so again, I commend you for the courage. I know it's going to be a difficult task. I've gone through it before. It was a different council then, and my colleagues supported me in creating that district. And we basically created a district that was very difficult to participate. But the vendors who participated then were complaining about the other vendors who were doing it illegally. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, councilman. Please. Please. Let's have some water.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Julio Cesar Ubique.
Good afternoon. My name is Julio Cesar Ubique.
No malos que yo le quería decir es de que no convirtamos esto en una carrera militar, porque si nosotros no nos defendemos, nos matan. Queremos...
Just wanted to ask you not to make this a military race, because if we don't defend ourselves, they'll kill us.
Queremos que nos den chance para vender, que su agenda de Navidad nos incluyan, para darnos los permisos para vender legalmente en la calle, por favor.
We just want to have a chance to sell, that your Christmas agenda includes us and that you legalize street vending.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Hello. Mi nombre es Jose Moreno.
Hello. My name is Jose Moreno.
Yo quisiera que todos aquí nos escucharan las peticiones que queremos, porque no queremos andar escondiendose de nadie.
I would like for everyone here to listen to our petitions, because we do not want to continue hiding from anyone.
Porque nosotros lo que hacemos es prácticamente lo hacemos con toda la dificadeza que se puede, para no causarnos daño a nadie, porque no vendemos estupefacientes, no vendemos nada ilegal, porque no queremos escondernos absolutamente de nadie, queremos hacer todo públicamente, que la gente lo vea y lo califique.
Because what we do and what we sell, we want to be able for the people to... We don't want to hide it, and we want to be able for the people to qualify it, but also be able to sell it freely. What we sell is not anything illegal.
De antemano, muchísimas gracias por escucharnos, y esperamos que nos den alguna... Cualquier día nos darían una sorpresa de que nosotros podamos andar legalmente absolutamente sin escondernos de nadie, porque no somos delincuentes.
Thank you for listening to us, and I am hopeful that you will give us a surprise and give us an ordinance, because we do not want to continue hiding. We are not criminals.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Egger. I'm wearing three hats. I'm on the board of the L.A. Food Policy Council. I am the president of the L.A. Kitchen, but I'm also the lead tenant in L.A. Prep, a 50-unit USDA-approved kitchen incubator that was designed specifically to offer food vendors and food entrepreneurs in L.A., a health kit-approved place to launch their business. Now, I have many interests, but I'm particularly a job creator and a job trainer, and I see vending as a tremendous vehicle to get young men and women aging out of foster care, men and women coming home from prison into a job that may lead them to be brick and mortar owners down the road. But it's also a tremendous opportunity to create vending opportunities to get fresh fruits and vegetables into underserved communities in a way that links not only healthy food but a healthy economy by giving people an opportunity to own their own business. I urge you to look very strongly at this legislation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kerry Morrison, Matt Matu, Ashley Klinkerbar, Blair Bestin, Peter Drevas, Sarah Jones. Not necessarily in that order.
Good afternoon. My name is Ashley Klinkenbeard. I'm in House Legal Counsel for Downtown Management Company, which owns numerous buildings in downtown and is landlord to 300 residential and 50 commercial tenants. Downtown Management wishes to oppose its proposal on behalf of itself and its tenants who have come to our office and expressed their concerns. Downtown Management spends a considerable amount of time, effort, and money to renovate and maintain its buildings, including city sidewalks. In addition, its tenants spend time and money complying with local zoning ordinances and health regulations. We are against this proposal and feel that our efforts have been undermined and betrayed by this measure, and our tenants will be severely and unfairly impacted.
My name is Matt Matu. I've been in business downtown for the last 11 years, and when I first moved in here, downtown was not the downtown you see today. It was dangerous. It was scary. And for business to come here and develop downtown, it takes guts. And a lot of people have done that, and we see Seventh Street, Sixth Street, all these new businesses coming in, and the people that are living downtown are moving to downtown because downtown is what it is today. Now, if you're going to go backwards, then what do you think would have happened if you had all these street vendors on the streets? You think these businesses would have come in? No. I have nothing against street vendors. We are hardworking as much as these street vendors will be, but we have regulations. We have employees. We have health issues. We have to wear gloves when we serve, and we have customer complaints. And where do the customers' complaints go on the street vendors? Thank you.
Hello. Blair Bestin, Executive Director of the Historic Core Business Improvement District. I've heard a lot that if we do this right, it could be a benefit to the city, but a framework that does not include funding and hiring of enforcement personnel is like a skeleton of a framework without a skull. It also doesn't include a mechanism for vendors to work in tandem with local communities. We created a local farmer's market in the Historic Core, and it closes Fifth Street every Sunday, and the vendors pay $30 to $50 a week to have a booth, and it pays for cleanup and the additional security staff. It funds a market manager. Please consider these things. Please trust your bids. We're on the front line, and we've been doing street services and trash collection, public safety for decades, and we continue to do it on the backs of our property owners and our business owners, because they care enough about their community to pay extra to keep them clean and safe. Please hear from the communities. Downtown has such special challenges with the Jones Agreement, with the Levon injunction, the Willett's case, which will make property owners liable for sidewalks. This is not a simple matter. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Jones. I'm a manager of an organic produce market on Fifth Street in downtown Los Angeles. Our position is, we're opposed to sidewalk vendors. It competes with our business. It produces excess amounts of trash and littering that we're also very concerned about, and there's just not... It's not appropriate for every single situation and neighborhood throughout the city of Los Angeles. So if you please listen to the business advisors and listen to the business improvement districts as well as the neighborhood councils, let them decide, and please listen to them.
Hi. My name is Peter Drevas, and I am an entrepreneur. I started a company with $300 that billed over $1 million a year. When I moved downtown L.A., I started a nonprofit foundation, and my businesses follow all city, local, state, federal rules and laws. To pretend that support of this is supporting entrepreneurship is misguided. This will... Vendors everywhere, on every corner, every street, will create crime, will create more litter, will create more debris, and it will take money and income from businesses who have followed the laws of the land, like I did. I'm not opposed to street vendors. I'm opposed to this. I will gladly donate my time to come up with a logical solution to make it work. You can't have them all over the streets. We have bicyclists and skateboarders as it is. This is wrong at this point in time when we're rebuilding Los Angeles. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es María, y les doy las gracias a todos. Como hermanos que somos, yo les pido que se pongan la mano en el corazón todos.
Hello. My name is María, and I want to thank... Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone, and I'm asking you, as the brothers and sisters that we are, to put your hand on your heart.
Aunque seamos unos morenitos, otros güeritos, pero somos hermanos. Y estas manos que ven, he sido vendedora por 20 años.
Although some of us are brown and some of us are lighter-skinned, we are brothers and sisters, and these hands that you see have been vending for 20 years.
Y he sacado adelante a un joven ciudadano americano que apenas se graduó en junio de economista.
And with these hands, I've helped my son, who just graduated as an economist.
Y sigo con mi hija también, que quiere ser un contador público, así como ven estas manos, los he sacado adelante porque soy padre y madre de los dos.
And I'm currently supporting my daughter, who is also studying to be a public accountant with these hands. I have helped them in their studies.
Y con mucho orgullo y dignidad. No somos delincuentes. Somos personas trabajadoras, y yo pienso...
With a lot of pride and dignity, we are not criminals. We are working people.
Pienso que el sol sale para todos, y por eso estamos aquí, porque queremos que legalicen la venta ambulante, por favor. Gracias.
And I believe that the sun rises for everyone, and this is why we're here. I'm asking you to legalize street vending. Thank you.
Okay, Martha Cox Nikelman, Joanne Kukumoto, Jessica Wall, Hilda Jimenez, Stephen Kane, Adele Yellen, Ashley Klinkerberg. Oh, Ashley spoke. Sorry.
Good afternoon. My name is Martha Cox Nittigman. I'm with the Building Owners and Managers Association. We represent over 300 commercial office building owners and tens of thousands of tenant businesses. We believe that the CLA report on street vending can be a starting place for a broader discussion of how the vending ordinance could work. Simply creating a process by which vendors are approved is only a small part of the overall analysis of street vending in Los Angeles. Broader questions must be asked. How will this be enforced and paid for? How will the city decide which vendors can work on a given street? Has the city looked at impacts such as noise, trash, and sign clutter? Now is the time to consider how residents and businesses in various communities will be affected. We ask that the committee hold off on action today to allow discussion on these and many other issues that were raised earlier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Joanne Kumoto. I'm with the Little Tokyo BID, and I think the previous speaker really spoke to a lot of our issues, but we represent a lot of mom-and-pop businesses, and many of them are not doing real well in our current economy and with a lot of construction in our community, and we would like an opportunity to work with the city and with the street vending group who would like to do this, so that we can all work together and come up with some of the... and come up with an agreement on how it can all work. I don't think we're opposing other mom-and-pop businesses, but we would like to be part of the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Jessica Law with the South Park Bid. The question for us isn't whether or not street vending is good or bad, but how can it actually be implemented citywide, and how can the program be staffed and funded by the city? As was highlighted in this weekend's Daily News article titled "Shrinking City Hall Workforces: Street Services Personnel is Down 40%. Sanitation Has Roughly 100 Positions to Staff," and the city's having great difficulty hiring and filling vital city positions. We see moving forward with a proposed framework without answering key economic and budgetary questions as premature. If departments are not provided adequate resources to complete their core functions, how can they take on the added responsibility of implementing a new city program? Bids are extremely impacted by this, such programs, and reap a lot of the unintended consequences. Last week, our bid alone called the county Health Department 15 times to deal with 12 abandoned carts. Not one person answered our call, and not one question was returned. This doesn't point to bad intentions, but rather a government that is strapped for resources. Today, we ask that you continue on reaching out to communities and that more information be gathered so a sustainable and functional program can be moved forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Adele Yellen, and I represent Grand Central Market and 42 vendors that are there presently. And we have been struggling over the past 18 months to come together and sort of reposition the market, and the people that are there have to... They have to invest. They have to follow all the health rules. They are obligated to pay permit fees and all kinds of other minute details that it just doesn't seem fair that at this point, there are going to be street vendors just outside the market competing with these people. They're struggling themselves, and they have made huge investments. Moreover, the city itself, and they've just done this beautiful street walk in the median... you know, along the median strip, and it has been so successful. What's going to happen to something like that? I support Jessica Law and what she said about reconsidering, thinking this through. I think it's really important that we do it in the right way. It's the best thing for an evolving downtown.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Kane. I'm area-wide resident director for Downtown L.A. Neighborhood Council, but here is speaking in individual capacity in strong support of what you're doing here. And also to say, those who are opposing this make some valid points, but I don't think that's a reason to do nothing. And there's a lot of support for this downtown, especially among residents. Paris has crepes. L.A. has bacon wrapped hot dogs. I agree with you, Mr. Price. It's something people want. It's something people enjoy. It's part of the culture. Second, I hope that there's something specific done in this measure if it goes forward to help street vendors comply with the regulation. Maybe some public-private partnerships, for example, microloans for street vendor equipment modernization. If health and safety standards are important, and I think they are very important, that could be of big assistance. Third, some have said that because the city can't enforce this regulation, it shouldn't be done. By that logic, the city shouldn't do anything. I think you can enforce it. If you don't, we'll be back here... We'll be back here to challenge that, but applaud you for doing something rather than nothing.
Thank you. Hilda Jimenez, Linda Rangel, Mike Dennis, Caridio Vasquez, Alfonso Garcia, and Mercedes You are our last speakers. If you'll please come forward.
Hello. My name's Oka. I'm here to support the street vendors, because I just want to say that I've been living in Boyle Heights for 43 years, and I've been consuming from them. I've been eating from their food for all these years, and I haven't got sick. I ate twice at Downtown L.A. restaurants, and I got sick at different times. So I just want to say, I want to support them, because I think they're very important for us. If there was like a health reasons or something like that, I'm pretty sure there could be classes or something that they could take. We could do something to work together and try to make this, like make them still be able to sell, because as brothers and sisters as we are, we should be helping one another. Where's the faith? as we are, we should be helping one another. Where's the faith? If we don't have faith and we don't help one another, then where's our faith going to then? The thing is, is that a lot of these vendors, they cook fresher food. Oh, my time's up?
Yes, you've got 10 seconds to finish, though.
I just say they cook fresh food, and we live in a food desert as it is. So if they take our vendors away, then we're really out of everything. Because we live in a community where we have a food desert, and there's other communities that have the same situation.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Mi nombre es Caridad Vasquez, y soy vendedora ambulante.
My name is Caridad Vasquez, and I'm a street vendor.
Antes quiero decirles, a lo que he escuchado, no sé inglés, pero he escuchado. Nosotros sí pagamos taxes los que vendemos en la calle.
Before we move forward, I want to say, and I don't understand English, but I want to say this, we do pay taxes.
Sabemos que a mucha gente no nos está apoyando, pero acuérdense que habemos muchos vendedores con la esperanza que salgamos de la sombra para seguir, para vender legalmente.
I know that we have opposition, but remember that there's a lot of street vendors and supporters here, and that there's a lot of street vendors who have the hopes of being able to come out of the shadows.
Desgraciadamente, somos latinos pobres, pero con ganas de luchar, trabajar, porque el trabajo que hacemos es como cualquier trabajo.
Unfortunately, we are poor Latino folks, but we know how to struggle, we know how to fight, and we know how to work, and we continue to do that.
Denos una esperanza, porque estamos triste por lo que estamos escuchando. Reúnanse, analicen nuestros problemas.
I want you all to give us hope, because it's really sad to hear the opposition, but I want you all to really analyze this situation.
Porque si no trabajamos, ¿de dónde van a sacar taxes? Si no nos legalizan la venta.
Because if we don't work, how are we going to pay taxes? How are we going to pay for stuff if we don't legalize sidewalk vending?
Es la preocupación de otros negocios que están alrededor de nosotros.
And that's some of the worries from some of the business owners, that we don't pay taxes. If we don't legalize vending, there's no chance of us paying taxes.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, committee. My name is Mike Dennis. I'm the director of organizing at ELAC, East L.A. Community Corporation. Together with the L.A. Street Vendor Campaign, we have 55 organizations, represent thousands of vendors across the city. And I want to speak to a couple things I heard from the opposition earlier. Specifically, our coalition includes 400 small business owners, mom and pop shops all over the city, many of which couldn't be here today because they're working their shops, right? The second thing is that the opposition has submitted, you know, laundry lists of concerns and complaints about the policy, and not one single solution has been brought forth by them. This coalition, these vendors, these folks are human beings that are trying to earn a living, and they're ready to work with the city to figure a way out through this. And I urge this committee to move this out of, to full council as a next step. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Lina. Yo vengo de, soy vendedora del MacArthur Park por más de 15 años.
Hello, my name is Lina. I am a street vendor for more than 10 years in MacArthur Park.
Quisiera que nos ayudaran a legalizar la venta ambulante, porque de ahí, por ejemplo, yo en mi caso, de ahí depende mi familia, que esté en México.
I would like to ask to legalize sidewalk vending, because especially in my situation, that's how I support my family and my family in Mexico.
Como ven, soy una persona ya de 64 años y me estoy ganando la vida decentemente aquí en este país.
As you can see, I am a person of 64 years of age, and I am still working very hard to support myself in this country.
Y yo también pago mis impuestos. Para las personas que estoy escuchando que no pagamos impuestos, yo sí pago mis impuestos. Y también, este, quiero decirles que no nos tienen que tratar como criminales, porque la policía sí nos trata como si fuéramos unos criminales.
I do, I want to say that I pay my taxes, and I also want to say that it's very important to have us not be treated like criminals, because the police truly does treat us like criminals.
Y con todo respeto, si legalizaron la marihuana, ¿por qué no legalizan a nosotros los vendedores ambulantes?
And with all due respect, if you can legalize marijuana, why not legalize sidewalk vending? Thank you.
Muchas gracias. Dios les bendiga.
Please, please. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Alfonso Garcia. Vengo del área de Pacoima. Mi trabajo principal lo realizo sábado y domingo en el parque Hanson Dam.
Good afternoon. My name is Alfonso Garcia. I'm a street vendor in Pacoima. As my regular work, I work at Hanson Dam on Saturdays and Sundays.
En dicho parque, la reunión es familiar todos los domingos. Ahí se festejan cumpleaños, se festeja alguno nomástico, cualquier tipo de reunión, el cual es sano.
At said park, every weekend is a type of family reunion, a celebration of parties, birthdays, et cetera. And everything is done in a very familial environment, and safely.
De esta manera, y a nombre de todos mis compañeros comerciantes ambulantes de todo el condado de Los Ángeles, humildemente les pedimos que nos sean escuchados para que así nuestra petición vaya con buen fin. Nuestro propósito es contribuir con la ciudad y estar al corriente de nuestros pagos y así salir a trabajar como Dios manda, con una tranquilidad, sin los nervios y sin aquel sentimiento de que nos vayan a tirar nuestra comida, la cual es sana y es fabricada, hecha en casa.
Like I said, on behalf of other street vendors throughout the county of Los Angeles, I want to ask for your support to legalize sidewalk vending. We want to be out there like with a feeling of tranquility, knowing that we're going to be able to support our families and work and not have to worry about these things. Thank you very much.
Gracias por escucharlos.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there Merced Sanchez? Okay. Or Hilda Jimenez? Okay, fine. Well, I want to thank all of you for your comments on both sides of this issue. Even though L.A. is considered to be a food destination around the world, and despite the fact that we have more than 50,000 street vendors citywide, it still is illegal to vend on our streets. The city will also be better able to regulate what people are buying and selling in our streets so that we can ensure that these products are safe for consumption and meet our public health and safety standards, and put a stop to the, to the current Wild, Wild West system that's in place. If other major urban areas, including New York, Portland, Chicago, and San Francisco can all have street vending policies, I think that we can too. So today, the CLA is going to report on how Los Angeles could implement a street vending policy with a general framework that they've developed over the past several months as instructed by this committee, and with the assistance from various city departments. And so at this time, I'd like the CLA to come forward to present their report to the committee and to the public that is anxiously awaiting.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Felipe Chavez, and I'm with the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst. In May of 2013, this committee heard the first CLA status report relative to the establishment of a sidewalk vending program in the city of Los Angeles. The report focused on soliciting community input, previous city efforts to establish a street vending program, and a brief overview of street vending programs in other jurisdictions. At that meeting, the committee instructed our office to work with city departments to design, fund, and implement a citywide street vending program, including necessary enforcement measures, operational budget, revenue projections, vendor fees, and options to encourage healthy food vending. Before you today is a CLA status report focused only on the design aspect of your committee's request. Our intent is to report back on the remaining issues once this committee has given the green light to proceed with the remaining components. Attached to the CLA report is a potential framework that your committee may consider should you decide to move forward with implementation of a sidewalk vending program. This framework is the result of meetings and discussions primarily with the Department of Public Works, Bureau of Street Services, Los Angeles Police Department, the city attorney, Economic and Workforce Development Department, and the County Public Health Department. We also consulted with the CAO, the Office of Finance, and the Department of Recreation and Parks. The city attorney has stated that establishing a sidewalk vending program could be permissible. At the request of the authors of the motion, council members Weesar and Price, our office held two stakeholder meetings to share the proposed framework and to solicit community input. At those meetings, stakeholders raised issues of concern relating to enforcement and implementation and funding, liability of business owners, potential violations of American Disability Act, diminished quality of life for surrounding community, gang activity, and issues of extortion of sidewalk vendors. Stakeholders also expressed concerns with the total cost of operation, including fees and equipment, penalties, and the permit revocation process, the need to consider financial and economic means of sidewalk vendors, and consideration of community service as an alternative to monetary penalties. Stakeholders also expressed a preference for a sidewalk vending program that promotes economic growth and self-sufficiency rather than imposing a limit on the number of permits which could restrain the potential for business growth. Lastly, stakeholders expressed the need for a process that gives a preference to existing sidewalk vendors. Numerous letters expressing opposition and support have been submitted to the city clerk, and these can be found under Council File 13-1493. I would also like to note that the proposed sidewalk vending program, as proposed, is limited to food and non-food items on city sidewalks and parks, and does not include services, food trucks, or any other type of vending on city streets. Should your committee give us the green light to proceed with the proposed framework, our office, along with city departments, will use it as a guide to develop a robust administrative enforcement and implementation plan, and we would report back to council on costs of operation, guidelines and procedures, notification process, types and number of permits, a fee structure, and other necessary criteria at a future date. What I would now like to do is go through the actual framework and explain the process that the working group came up with. As you can see at the very top, there's an introductory educational component, and we have this component in place to basically assist the vendors in learning about the different, the new requirements and regulations that would be in place. The educational component would be led by the Economic and Workforce Development Department and by officials from the L.A. County Public Health Department. Upon deciding what it is, what type of vending activity vendors want to engage in, they can either go to the Department of Recreation and Parks or Public Works to determine whether there is availability in terms of locations. And Public Works and/or Rec and Parks would issue a temporary permit that would allow vendors to go through the process and obtain all necessary documentation before issuing a permanent permit. If a vendor chooses to do non-food vending, they would not have to go through the county process. They would go directly to the city, and the Economic and Workforce Development would assist them with educating them of what the requirements and criteria are in order to proceed and get, obtain a permit. For those that, who wish to obtain a, to sell food items, then those would be required to go through the county. Depending on the type of food that they wish to sell, the requirements are different. Some of the, some of the foods require a contract with a commissary, and some of them do not require a contract with the commissary. You have...
Could you give us an example of those that do and don't? Can you, just a brief example?
Yes. Back in 2011, there was a, the state passed the cottage food law, which allows for certain types of baked goods to be prepared in the home kitchen. Those don't require a commissary because the county goes and inspects those home kitchens and issues a permit for those types of foods, such as fruit tamales, and cookies, and other type of pastries. What we're trying to do is work with the county to, to see if there's a way to bring those items to the sidewalks and allow for the vending of those items since they are now permitted in terms of selling them at the home or selling those items to third parties such as stores or restaurants. If, once the individual decides what type of food they need to get, they do need to get a food handler certification, and they do need to show evidence of working with a manufacturer to ensure that their equipment is in compliance with county requirements. At the request of council members Weesar and Price, we also included a healthy food certification component. And the county and our office were working together in terms of developing the list of foods and the type of criteria that would define healthy food. Once that is done, we would work with our city family to develop an incentive program, if that continues to be a priority of this, this committee. So once, once they're issued the permit, the health permit, individuals would go and obtain the city of L.A. tax registration. They would also work with EWD to obtain proof of liability insurance. And to ensure that they pay a sales tax, they must get a state seller's permit. Once EWD determines that, you know, their, their package is in place and they're ready to move forward, these would be referred to the Department of Public Works or Recreation and Parks, who would ultimately issue the permit. If, we anticipate that many, many individuals who are not aware of this process would probably just go directly to those departments and would be denied a permit. At that point, they would probably be referred back to the educational component to learn about what that criteria is. In conclusion, I would like to reiterate that we have, what we have before you is only a proposed framework, and we are seeking committee direction to develop the remaining components and report back to council with a robust administrative enforcement and implementation program. Our office will continue to seek input from stakeholders throughout the entire program development process to ensure that all concerns are addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your, for your work and your diligence. Can you just review for us what the involvement has been with the county, the health department, their regulation of vendors in county areas?
Yes. The county representatives are here today, in case you have questions for them as well, but they have been involved throughout the entire process. It's been a learning experience for our office to work with them. We have made several visits to their inspection sites to learn about what that, what that is like. And we've also learned a lot about what the requirements are in terms of the guidelines. And a lot of it, we have concluded that it has to do with education and interpretation of those guidelines in order to get people to understand what they are.
Members, there are 11 specific recommendations being made. You have comments on those or any other comments, Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me say first how much I appreciate that Mr. Weesar and Chairman Price have started an important dialogue, I think, to have about where street vending fits in to our larger economy, where it fits into our streetscapes, and how it impacts our communities. I think it's an important dialogue to have, especially when you consider if there's an estimated 50,000 street vendors right now entirely unregulated with no ability to really determine what those impacts are in an unregulated environment. It's important to have that discussion, and I'm glad we've had the chance to begin it. But I... But I want to really emphasize that as far as I can see, we're only at the very, very front end of the beginning of that discussion. There have been a number of people who spoke in the public who asked us to begin work on an ordinance. As I sit here today, and you're asking for approval of a framework, I don't even think we're at a point of understanding what that framework is. What I have before me is about seven pages of a report that doesn't really even weigh some of the most fundamental policy decisions that we're going to have to make as a council, whether to allow food vending only, whether to allow non-food vending only, what kinds of food, should there be a limit on the number of permits, what kind of time and place restrictions should there be? None of that is addressed in any way. We've already gotten into the flow chart of what the approval process for permits will be, but we haven't asked those fundamental, really strategic-level policy discussions yet. We haven't decided that as a council. So, I don't know how we can proceed with a framework before we've gotten to that point. We haven't any idea of what the budgetary implications of this will be yet. And I understand because it's early and because you can't really do that until you get to the point of asking those more fundamental questions. But enforcement has got to be a key issue here because that, I think, is the biggest argument that everybody has submitted in support of this. Instead of having an unregulated Wild West environment, why don't we have a regime where there's some enforcement? Right now, we have 50,000 vendors, and each year about 1,000 of them have been arrested, and about under 300 have gotten notices to appear from street services. That means 97% of the 50,000 vendors, there's no enforcement at all, and all of them are currently operating illegally. So, if that's the level of enforcement we have now, then what will it take for us to have enforcement when there's a legalized regimen? We don't know yet. But I can tell you, it's going to be labor-intensive and cost-intensive, and we're going to have to deal with that in the budget. And I, for one, as budget chair, would not be willing to support a program that essentially subsidizes street vending. We can't at a time when we're cutting -- when we're still trying to recover from cuts to our fire department and our police department and street services and our parks and everything else, we can't be in a position of creating a system by which we are essentially subsidizing private enterprise. And I think if we are to do this, it has to be -- we have to consider a full-cost recovery kind of regimen. Right now, the other entrepreneurs who are here, the entrepreneurs who saved their whole life to open a little shop on the corner, if they put a sign out on the sidewalk, they get cited by street services. If they put a chair out on the sidewalk so somebody can drink a cup of coffee that they buy there, they get cited by street services, and it's full-cost recovery citation. It's going to cost them the price of the inspection, and there's going to be a notice to comply issued, and there's going to be thousands of dollars of expense to that business. So, I don't know how we can have that kind of system in place for one category of struggling mom-and-pop entrepreneurs, but then have a different enforcement system with a different cost structure for a different category of mom-and-pop entrepreneurs. That would simply be fundamentally unfair. In terms of the volume of these, I think there's absolutely -- by the way, I think there's absolutely a place for street vending in this city. I think we absolutely -- it adds to the vitality of areas in certain places. It adds to the -- a festive atmosphere in some places, and it's a wonderful entrepreneurial opportunity for some. But just to give a sense of comparison here, New York City is well-known for its street vendors. Everybody who's been to Manhattan has bought a hot dog from a street vendor in Manhattan. They have 3,000 food vendors in a city twice our size. 3,000 food vendors. We have 10,000 right now. So, that gives you a sense of the scale. The Chicago food vendor permit system, they allow only the sale of fresh fruit and vegetables. No hot dogs, no popcorn, no cooked nuts, nothing else other than fruits and vegetables. So, I think the point of all this is, yes, we should look at what other cities are doing. Yes, we should look at a way that we can bring this industry, if you will, out of the shadows and into an enforcement environment. But we need to know that that enforcement environment is going to be a real enforcement environment that protects public health, protects fair competition, protects access to our sidewalks, protects the quality of life and our streetscapes in our neighborhoods, and a variety of other things that we haven't even begun to touch upon in what's before us. So, those are some of my initial comments. I think as far as the specific recommendations in the November 26th CLA report, most of them seem to ask for reports back, which I gather, Mr. Chairman, will be reports back to this committee.
That's correct.
And I think that's great. I think we continue this discussion, we continue to get the reports back, and then we can start to answer some of those more difficult policy questions. A number of them, and I would cite specifically the 4, 5, 6, 10, and 11, seem to already be anticipating that, in fact, a policy will be in place. And I would suggest that those are probably premature until we're at the point of actually deciding what such a policy should be. Those involve -- well, you can see what they involve. So, 4, 5, 6, 10, and 11 seem to me to be the sorts of things that we're going to do after a policy is in place, and I think we could defer those. I'm unclear on what exactly number 2 is getting at, because I think there was a portion of that missing. It says instruct the Department of Public Works Bureau of Street Services to develop, including a list of items that would be permitted, such as new merchandise that can be tracked to discourage the sale of stolen goods. I don't quite follow what the import of that is. Maybe you could explain what that is?
To develop a list of items that would be permitted, such as new merchandise, that can be tracked to discourage the sale of stolen goods.
So...
Develop a list.
What's the connection between the sale of stolen goods and the list of acceptable merchandise?
The Department of Public Works expressed a concern for not being able to track the items that are being sold, and they wanted to have the ability to track them either by a receipt or some other manner.
Okay. So, the street vendor would have to demonstrate some evidence of where those items were acquired by the street vendor?
Correct.
Okay. But in addition to that, this also calls for a report back about what would be appropriate categories of items that would be eligible for street vending as well?
Correct.
Okay. So, for example, if it's going to be food, which categories of food will we allow, which will we disallow? If it's going to be other merchandise, what categories of merchandise would we allow and disallow?
Correct. And the guidelines and regulations for the food items are governed by the county. So, they would tell us, depending on the type of food, what the requirements are for that type of food. So, it can vary.
Yeah, but we still have to make the decision even before it gets to what the health requirements are that the county would require. We have to make the decision of what categories of food we wish to permit.
Yes.
So, for example, as I say, in Chicago, it's only whole, uncut, fresh fruits and vegetables.
That is correct.
Mayor Bloomberg in New York launched the new green carts program, which will allow for sale of fresh fruits and vegetables and so on. We have to make those decisions, and then, once we make those decisions, then the county will play a role in determining what the health standards are for each of those categories.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have a lot more questions, but I think if, for the bulk of these, other than the ones that I mentioned, if the intention is to bring these reports back to this committee, I think that that's a helpful thing for us to do. I'm not inclined to give a green light to any part of this until I have all of that back and can kind of understand how the picture is going to fit together.
Yeah, well, the only green light we're proposing at this point is that we get some additional information.
Yeah.
That we get the details on items like where the kinds of licenses would be required, where selling would be permitted, cost of a license, cost of enforcement. I agree. That could certainly -- will definitely influence whether or not we move forward. We want to make sure it is going to be sustainable.
Right.
Do you have any comments, clarifying comments?
Just a comment. It is our intent to bring all of these back. This was intended to get this committee's input on whether we're on the right track for the type of program you're looking for. Clearly, this was to give us that additional direction so that we can come back with the appropriate guidelines, enforcement, the permitting costs, to ensure cost recovery as well so that we do not impact the general fund budget. So, all of that with regard to the regulations, the process, the procedures, all of that would have to come back to you for further approval. To make it very clear, there is no program yet. This is only the beginnings of a conceptual approval of how we move forward today. So, those items will all come back to you for further approval, and also for the committee to decide, like, for example, the types of products that are sold, the distance between carts, if you so choose, to ensure that there's appropriate distance requirements from the street, and so that people can pass the sidewalks. There may be additional regulations with regard to trash or additional fees to ensure that that trash is collected and disposed of in a proper fashion. So, all of those will have to come back to you. We intend to work with both the proponents and opponents to address these issues. Many of those issues are really within the design of the program, and that is our intent to bring that back forward to this committee for approval.
Ms. Crutch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think my concern is that I have very mixed feelings about this whole process, but at the same time, I'm sympathetic for the people that are deriving their income from it. I think Mr. Kocorian has largely said what I'd like to say. I think we are so far from having the details that would allow us to hint that we have a program to approve in any way. I wouldn't want to vote to do anything that implied I was moving a program forward. I think we need a lot of information to know even whether this is a good idea or a bad idea. It kind of reminds me at this stage of what we did with moving together the planning and building and safety departments. We were working on how we bring them together. We never approved it because, at the end of the day, we never actually saw a reason to do it. So, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. We're starting to figure out how to do it, but we haven't had any of the analysis that would let us really even consider whether we should be doing it. Do we know whether we're going to revitalize our business community or whether we're going to knock out some brick-and-mortar businesses and actually harm it? Do we know whether we're going to wind up with more tax money or less tax money, which I certainly fear? There are issues, like you mentioned, how do you deal with the sidewalks? Where you have narrow sidewalks, is it even practical to do it? Are there zones where, because of ADA, if we're actually in charge of a program, could we be in charge of a program where we're in violation? I think that would be more problematic than our inability to enforce a situation yet we're in violation. If it's our program, we have to be sure we do it right. And the needs are different in different parts of the city. I know we at once had a program in MacArthur Park that obviously was too small an area. There are parts of the city where I think there is a much lighter, if any, need for it. If you look at my district, there are no food deserts. We have every kind of store. We have every kind of restaurant represented in multiple degrees in every ethnicity. We have very few people that are actually the residents of my district, operating food trucks and operating food carts. There's really almost no connection, so there's less of a reason to include my district as an example. So, I don't know if we go citywide or we do it where the need is presenting itself. I think there's so many issues, and there are pieces of this that I think could be clearly problematic. So, what do we do with restrooms? What do we do with other health issues? What do we do with some areas that are experiencing large amounts of trash being left over? I don't think any of these questions are really being answered. So, I think we really need to, as was said, not put the cart before the horse and actually determine how much sense this makes to do it before moving forward and figuring out how to do it. And again, I don't lack sympathy for people on either side of this. I just want to be sure that we can do this, doing some good while doing a minimal amount of harm. And I would only be able to know that once we have a lot more information and we've done a lot more study. So, I'm happy to see us get more information on the questions that we need to ask and other questions. I'd like to see us do more outreach to different parts of the city, to neighborhood councils and others, and get more feedback on it. I know this issue's been going on for a long time, but I don't see now that we're looking at moving more concretely that we have to race to do it. I think we absolutely need to get all the answers before even giving a nod to this idea, because the response I've gotten from some folks is, okay, the fix is in, everybody knows it's already going to happen, there's nothing we can do. I don't think that's the case. We're trying to solve a problem that exists, which is we have so many food vendors. We want them to be able to make a living at the same time they're having an impact negatively on some businesses and true with other vendors, other problems. So, I think I would agree with Mr. Kocorian that this is an issue that will have its place at some point, but I don't think we want to even hint that this is an approval as opposed to a stage where we need to ask a lot more questions and get a lot more input.
Well, Ms. Crutch, I agree with you. I don't think the fix is in. I think there's still a lot of work to be done on this subject. A lot more input, a lot more specifics need to be laid out, and I think that's the purpose of this report, of the requested report, is to have that additional information so that we are in a position to make an informed decision. Mr. Seale?
Mr. Weezer?
Mr. Weezer? And if I could, before you go, if I could apologize, because I have my own committee at 3 o'clock, so my apologies if --
Speak and run.
-- I'm departing. Speak and run.
Speak and run. Mr. James, thank you for being here. It demonstrates your commitment to help us resolve this vaccine problem. I think -- I know, I agree with my colleagues that, as we would say in Sacramento, this is not cooked yet. And so, there's no question that we are away from a resolution. But I would say also, at the same time, Mr. Crutch, that this is an idea whose time has come. That there is no question that this is going to happen, that this process of legalization is a process that cannot be stopped. People soon in the beginning of the year will be able to drive legally. Amongst great concern and hysteria that people had for 20 years, the fact of the matter is that we are going to move forward in a way that works. People, for the last two years, have been able to study legally. For years, we did not allow undocumented children to apply for scholarships and to participate with other students in the same way. People will be able to live here legally, and this is a result of an action taken by the president, controversial, not clear, not certain, but nevertheless, an act of leadership and courage on behalf of the president. Not all that we would want, but nevertheless, progress for those who will be positively impacted. So, the question for us is a question of how. And there are very many legitimate questions that have been raised by people who came here from specific communities, and they need to be addressed. And I think... And I think, as I look at the response from the CLA's office, I think they're asking the right questions. I think the questions are focused, and you can look at the report, all the responses are focused on the questions that are being raised. Questions of implementation, questions of oversight, questions of time, place, and manner, questions of budget, questions of crime, questions of implementation and oversight. All those are the questions that are inherent in the outline of the things that you gave us. And so, I appreciate that you are on the right track, because when I've heard from the business community, everybody's asking about oversight, implementation, cost. Evidently, vendors are a magnet for criminal activity, so questions of crime and supervision. Those questions are legitimate questions. They're legitimate questions for all businesses, and so I would ask, and all of us who think about this, think about what we talked about this morning. And Mr. Kocorian, you've been one of the great proponents of this, and I've supported this. For the film industry, we're all excited because we're going to give them tax breaks. We're going to give them $300 million for this industry to make movies, right? And yet, all the concerns that are raised for street vendors are concerns that I hear from other businesses about making film in Los Angeles, right? Businesses come to me and say, you know, they take up the streets, people want to use my restrooms, there's crime, there's noise, it's a question of access to sidewalks, ADA, and there's a question about our communities, the traffic, the backlog. All those things are brought to us from businesses when we make a movie. What's our response to that? Our response is to figure out what are the solutions and then how we pay for that. We go to Sacramento and we say, you've got a surplus, and we want you to give us $300 million so that this business, that's pretty prosperous, but is challenged, can be more prosperous, because it creates jobs. And so, I want us to think about that, because in all our proposals, when those questions are asked, no one's asking how we're going to pay them. No one says, are we going to subsidize the street vendors? Are we going to subsidize their training? Are we going to subsidize the enforcement? Are we going to subsidize the police? Yet, when we make a movie, nobody hesitates. Nobody pauses. In this city, you could not dare say that you would pause on supporting the movie industry, right? You would say, no, we've got to do it. Why? Because it creates jobs, right? Because people need an opportunity to work and to pay for their own families. And so, it's interesting here. What we have here is really concerns of one business community over another business community. We have a concern about small businesses who have to compete with these new businesses, and they're legitimate concerns. Let me say to you that these are legitimate concerns, that bricks and mortar take on a whole array of challenges, right, to open up their fruit shop and then are challenged by a person outside with a cart who gets first access to the person coming out of the parking lot to sell the same fruit, but doesn't have to pay the same cost of the restroom, the rent, the insurance, the workers' compensation, the other liabilities that come with that. That's a real concern. So, you can't, we're not all innocent here. We're not all criminals here. We are trying to figure out how businesses can work with other businesses. And so, at this moment, we're not ready to do this, but we have to position ourselves to figure out how we can, how we can answer those questions, because they're legitimate, at the same time realizing where we're headed. And one size doesn't fit all. I see my friend here from, I think he's from Studio City. He always comes and reminds us how it is over there. And I just took a nice drive through Encino yesterday. The city is not the same, right? 50,000 people moved into downtown. 20% of the new housing of this city has come into 1% of the landmass of this city. We have a vibrant community in downtown, of which also, street vending is a part of it. The question is, how do we make it a part that fits, right? What's the right size of that? And that's the question that we're going to ask you to work, and that's the question that seems to me evident in the 11 questions that you asked, right? It's a question Councilmember Hernandez was here, and we've had experiences with that. And we need to look at those experiences to figure out what worked and what didn't work, because we have to do it right. And all the things that we're moving forward with as we move towards legalization, we're doing it right. And sometimes it takes longer, but at the end of the day, it's always timely when we get to that point. And so, it's important for us to do this right, to take the time, to make sure we've heard the voices from the brick-and-mortar community, heard the voices from the neighbors, but not forget that, at the end of the day, these are small businesses. These are microenterprises. This is a creation of $400 million of wealth, and this is a creation of jobs and homes and independent businesses in the city of Los Angeles. And so, this is very important for us to keep our eyes on the prize, but to understand that because it's so important and because we've waited so long, that we don't have time to waste, and at the same time, we have to take all the time that it takes. And I know these things from having worked on them. Sometimes it takes 16 years. Sometimes it takes eight. Sometimes it takes 20. Sometimes it takes longer than that. This city has been working with this, but now is the time for us to pull these resources. And I want to applaud everybody who's here from the county, and I want to applaud the city and the county for the collaboration and the spirit of collaboration that's going on, because we will not be successful in this city unless we collaborate together. And I really appreciate the observations that are made, because this is always what I do when we travel as elected, is go look to see how their cities work. And see in New York how you can go get a knish, right? How you can go get a bagel. How you can go get one of these, I'll say, exotic sandwiches, right? And how that works and how that's woven into what takes place around the way they organize public space. And I don't doubt that we would, we don't have the same capacity to make it work for us in the city of Los Angeles. It must work. It can work, and the only question now is how we can make it work. So, I thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wizar?
Any comments?
Thank you. And we requested at the last hearing that we have some stakeholder meetings, and how do we reach out or who attended those stakeholder meetings? And we had two, correct?
Yes, we had two stakeholder meetings.
And who attended those or how did we reach out to those folks?
Part of it was we worked with both council offices to provide us the names of organizations and individuals who have participated in this process previously. CCA was one of the organizations. A lot of the bids were there. Estela Community Corporation representatives were there, and street vendors themselves were there as well.
Because as I review this and I take a look at the proposed idea of getting to a street vending ordinance, and we look at 10 of the largest cities in this country that have done one already, I tell myself, well, you know, something can be done and should be done. And, but I'm surprised at listening to public comment about a lot of the misinformation that's out there about this. So, I was just wondering if those types of discussions happened. I thought that we would be much further ahead in the type of dialogue and discussion that we're having today about this. This motion was introduced a year ago, and I would, I thought we'd be much further ahead in terms of having, understanding what this means and that we would kind of, you know, the problems that were being described, I think, will be alleviated or dealt with through an ordinance. At the same time, I think that, you know, what some of the proponents of this policy have said is that they want to protect brick-and-mortar businesses, et cetera, but it seems like that communication somehow hasn't happened, and I'm just a bit surprised at where there seems to be two sides to this issue. I thought everyone would be, well, let's, we all win, you know? We're all going to win by having this. Let's just figure out how we do this, because certainly what we have right now is not working. The concerns and complaints that I hear in parts of downtown is the very precise reason why we need a regulation. The concerns and complaints that I hear about in the other part of my district is the very reason why we need a regulatory system. And I thought it would be a win-win all the way around, and maybe we need to have more of those discussions so that as we move forward and come back with what I believe, there's a number of questions that yet need to be answered, that we would probably all have a better understanding, but those things need to be thoroughly explained, options need to be reviewed, and hopefully, we come back at a very different place next time from where we are now. I thought we'd be a much different place that we came back. But I certainly have concerns about enforcement. It's a real thing. When in our own parks, we can't have enough, when there is illegal activities, real crime occurring, you know, it's very difficult to get any type of enforcement there. It's difficult for us to get enforcement in certain parts of the city for things that are, you know, real, and that is a concern. We need to see how that will happen to alleviate those concerns. We need to look at that and dig in deeper. The fee study certainly needs to be looked at to ensure that, one, it is not cost prohibitive for vendors to even apply to get a license, and on the other hand, that this is a program that recoups its administrative costs, so that, as Mr. Kocorian said, seems like we do have a number of other priorities in the city at this time and that we can make this program self-sufficient. And we won't know those answers to either of those questions, whether it's cost prohibitive or self-sufficient, until we look at what the cost to this. So, there's a lot of important questions we still need answered, and, but I think even before we get there, a lot more communication needs to happen, because I just didn't hear it in this room that what we're trying to address is a real understanding of what we're trying to get at. And some of those issues that were laid out in front of either our motion or even in the initial discussions, we laid out the concerns about protecting brick-and-mortar businesses, the concerns about over-concentration, the concerns of obstructing sidewalks. All those issues were laid out early on, that that is, those are precisely the types of issues we want to address. So, I think even as we go forward and get answers to these more fundamental questions about the policy itself, we need to be in a parallel track and continue to have discussions and open dialogue with a number of stakeholders about this as we move forward. So, that is my request. I know there's a number of questions we have proposed, but I would ask that we continue to have those stakeholder discussions so that, let's say, we do come up with a proposed policy and we come to a committee meeting again, that people are not surprised that they've been part of the process, that they've seen and been part of the dialogue and us getting to the point where we are. So, that's my only request, that we continue the stakeholder discussions before we come back. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Well, one thing that's very clear to me, and I think all of us, everyone who's spoken, is that what we have in place isn't working. I firmly believe that creating a system for street vending will help microentrepreneurs thrive. It's going to help bring more diverse, more diverse food to our communities, like the one I represent, and it's going to provide an opportunity for economic growth and development in ways that we haven't seen before. L.A. is the second-largest city in the nation, and as far as I'm concerned, it's the best city. I think we should have a firm, a clear, an effective street vending policy. So, I'm going to recommend that we approve the CLA report recommendations before us. Also, request the city attorney to report back on any legal concerns with the vending policy, including indemnification of property owners or tenants if a legal case arises due to vending outside of their property. Do we need to read each of those recommendations?
Well, I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Question?
No. Okay. First of all, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I just, I feel like I must respond to some of the points made by my friend, Mr. Siedl, who, as always, with incredible eloquence tied together many, many issues, some of which aren't on the table today, but still, the comparison with the film industry and the work we've done there, I think, is somewhat apt, because the only time that either the state or local governments have taken any action with regard to that industry to help bring those jobs here has been after a substantial and thorough and comprehensive economic analysis to demonstrate the net positive impact there. But we're not talking about that here today. We're also talking about, when you talk about the interface between film location shoots and local businesses and the impact it has on local businesses, the difference there is that the film industry on that location shoot is permitted and is regulated, and that's not the case that we're talking about here yet. What we're talking about here is a comparison between two categories of small businesses. It's one small business competing against other small businesses, and whatever we move forward with here is going to have the effect of picking winners and losers among small entrepreneurs. And so, I, for one, want to make sure that we're doing that in a way that's fair and it's well thought out. And so, I appreciate the, I think the consensus here that that should be the goal that we're going to work in. But my question to the CLA is, as I pointed out, item number four on this list of recommendations calls for instructing the Economic and Workforce Development Department to develop an education program. Item five instructs the department to develop a technical assistance program. Item six instructs Department of Public Works and other agencies to monitor the program and report at, one year after implementation. Item number 10 instructs the CLA to work with the county to develop criteria on healthy food items, and number 11 instructs the CLA and other departments to develop an incentive program. All of those are prescriptive implementation instructions. They aren't reports back. And so, I'd like to understand, first of all, whether that's, those instructions are necessary to get the reports back that we're talking about. I don't see that they are. I see that all of those are things that we would implement after a program is in place. So, I would be, I think I would be supportive of items 1, 2, 3, 7, 8, and 9, all of which seem to involve, well, even 8, instructs Public Works and the PD to develop an enforcement protocol. If that is necessary to be able to make the policy judgments that we need to make and the budget judgments and so on, I guess I can understand the need for an enforcement protocol. The others are all implementation issues.
Perhaps item number four, because it could be integral to the actual design of the program and possible costs related to the program. The Economic and Workforce Development Department may have some costs associated with it in terms of doing an educational program for such a thing, so it might be helpful for them to weigh in on what that education program could look like, the time involved to develop one, and actually to implement one.
So, if those are asking for those departments to report back with recommendations for doing so, I'm fine. If we're instructing them to begin implement, we wouldn't even know, they wouldn't even know where to begin and how to educate people, because they don't know what the scope of the program's going to be, if, if any, program. So, if, if we can modify those to call for reports back with recommendations, I think that would be, that would be helpful, and I think as long as we're not, you know, then beginning implementation, that would, I'd be able to support that with that understanding.
Well, yeah, again, the intent is not to implement anything at this point. Mr. Vice Chair, I think we want to get reports back on, including those items, 4, 5, 6, and 11.
Okay.
All right. So, if there's no further discussion, we will--
Mr. Chairman, are we, are we doing it? I, I mean, it makes sense what the vice chair says, probably the way I would have proceeded, but, but I don't see it that the, that the others, I don't see that the others to be that problematic, because, again, it's not implementing anything. It's other, it's ideas about how things might work, right? It's hypothetical. But there's also, there's a reality that everybody's aware of. I mean, you can't have a sense of what, of what--
I mean, we can have a sense of what this community looks like. There's information and data that describes it. So, but I think it makes sense. I mean, if we narrowed it down, one, two, three, seven, eight, nine, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with that, although I don't have a problem going forward. Although I, since we're looking at the specifics, have we, here's a great example. Have we made a determination that we're doing healthy food? And what does that mean? And, you know, I see that here. Does that mean an end to bacon-wrapped hot dogs? Or, I mean...
Maybe.
You know, I, see, that's a, that's a decision that I don't think we've made yet, right?
Right. And I don't, I think we want to get some more information on that, what that healthy program would look like.
So if I may, Mr. Siedl, just responding to that. The point is, with the ones that I mentioned, as it's, as they're currently drafted in the recommendations, they are instructing implementation. They are instructing the departments to implement these things. So I think with the clarification that Ms. So just gave and the chair gave, those will be, I don't know if we need to modify, we'll modify the language in the committee report, I guess, but it should indicate that those departments will be reporting back with recommendations as to those issues.
So with regard to those recommendations, what you're stating is an instruction to those departments to develop the items that are requested and to report back prior to implementation?
Well, I don't think they can even develop, I don't know how they develop...
Well, working with our offices to develop as we...
They should report back with their recommendation as to what would go into an education program, what would go into an enforcement protocol and so on. If they begin developing those programs, they're, again, anticipating a policy that we haven't made yet.
Correct. And I think I stated prior to any implementation. So it's working on it, but not, there would be a report that would come back to you for actual approval. What you're saying is to modify recommendations four, five, six, 10, and 11 for an instruction for these departments to
Report back to the committee.
Report back on the development of these things that are requested.
Right. Because I can't, I don't know what we would be asking the department to go and begin developing until the council makes the decision about what our policy direction is. So they should report back, but they shouldn't begin developing protocols and developing education programs and spending an enormous amount of staff time doing things that we don't know whether or not we're even going to go forward with, or if we are going to go forward with, in what direction.
All right. So we'll approve the CLA report as clarified to the committee, the recommendations as clarified, with report backs to this committee before any type of implementation is carried out. All right, is that clear, members? Okay, any other questions?
I'll second that if it's necessary.
Any other comments? Okay. Well, thank the CLA for your report. I know you were taking copious notes, and we'll look forward to a report back on those items identified and those concerns raised by members. Okay? Seeing no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
All right.